Alright, there we go. It's town hall meeting number 103. It's June 25th, 2024. And today, we're joined by Felix, Gorga, Kenichi, Slid, Tavvo, Advan, Emi Yar, Clement, Ese, Hogan, Jeffrey, Karim, Noah, Bianca, Sugar, Vanessa, and William. Thanks all for being here. As you can see on screen, it's the monthly workgroup update town hall. So the agenda is relatively straightforward. We start off with a couple of mentions and then we head over to the workgroup updates done by all of you beautiful people. If there's then, at the end of that, any room remaining on the clock, there might be some space for open topics. We'll have to see about that there. So yeah, that's the agenda. Then a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we do. We're a group of many people that are all aligned with the mission and vision of the single internet ecosystem and want to help out, contribute to it, spread the word. And we do this in a pretty wide variety of self-organizing workgroups on a bunch of different topics. So if you're interested in helping out, I'm sure there's a workgroup that fits your interests. Do hop onto our Discord server, that has a Getting Started channel, which will get you started. Then, three quick mentions. First one, being on deep funding round four. The results are in. You can see on deepfunding.ai. We have a couple of people in the room that got awarded, but also to all proposers that participated and everybody that voted. Thanks a lot. Without you, there is no deep funding and we just do it for nothing. So thanks all for participating. And yeah, I hope if you did not get funded, please do not be disgruntled and always notice next rounds and then try to learn from feedback and yeah, best of luck in round five, which I'm not gonna spoil anything on that. Okay, let's keep it at that. Yeah, then two practical notes on upcoming Thursday, being the 27th. There's two calls. First one, at 10 UTC, is the workgroup sinking call, where representatives of all workgroups will be present to kind of exchange common issues, topics we all bump into. And this is gonna be the very first call of that. It's gonna be a monthly call. And yeah, the idea being that every workgroup has similar stuff going on and there's overlaps, so in order to prevent reinventing the wheel, there's a sinking call now starting. And that's scheduled to take one hour. We'll see if we can actually do that. Because then an hour and 15 minutes later, at 11:15 UTC, there's a consent call on Q3 budgets. I do imagine government's workgroup updates a bit later on will also touch on the topic. But broadly speaking, and top of mind at that, so don't pay me on the numbers. But I believe out of the 15 proposals, six got approved, five got not approved, and four had, let's say, formal issues, so also weren't considered in this consent round. And basically, this call on Thursday is aimed to go through all of the constraints and all the objections and then try to solve them, to clear the air, to make sure that everybody's on the same page. We had a bit of an exploration on this during governance workgroup earlier today. And while the session on Thursday is also scheduled for one hour, I think we can get through most of it, but it might be need for extending it a little bit. So I wouldn't be surprised if that would run for an hour and a half. Just a little heads up there. And I think that kind of covers. Also, welcome to the new journals. And while I said that, two more people pop into the waiting room. Nice. Yeah, that's pretty much it. Then, time to shift to the beef of this call. Being the workgroup updates, it's based on order of calendar appearance. Oh, I see the very bottom of the slide, while adding new workgroups to the schedule, kind of got cut off, which is a good sign, right? Where we're expanding the workgroups. Yeah, and the very first call, three hours after this town hall, is the weekly Latam Guild meeting. So, Guillermo, I get to put you on the spot. Would you have an update for us?
Hi, everyone. Good to see you guys again. Okay. Third Latam Town Hall. So just a quick correction to Peters. Through this first two months operations, we have bi-weekly meetings. As much of the operations architecture is going out of meetings. And why? This, because the roadmap we have been drafting is mainly focused on being able to start operations next week. And that we need a strong onboarding, as we presented in our proposal. That was approved by the community, because we are not the African Guild. The African Guild have members of almost half, 50% of the core contributors. They already know procedures, tooling, tools. They know they are part of our core contributors. In the Latam, it's different. So we need to select properly the ones that will have the mandate to educate well, yeah, and share the knowledge. And for that, we are going through a stronger onboarding, following some of the guilds doing an evaluation and a solid onboarding. And so we will pick the six stronger members or candidates for this. We already have almost 20 members that want to participate, some developers. The other thing that we are focusing is on, and we share this with Peter several calls we have for him to help me to build this, us to build this, is that we want representation of four countries in this beginning phase. Argentina, Inés and me are from Argentina. That's it. It's enough Argentina in a boat. But still, we want one more, because I have a lot on the table and I want to be able to share responsibilities. And we have a great developer that is already in Target and a lot of candidates. And then we have already two Brazilian, big Cardanian fans, so Tiwo and a lot of people here are gonna be happy about that. Maria is a big SPO leader in Brazil community and some Akawi that have been part of our different endeavors with a lot of members that are helping with in Brazil. And we have been having these meetings, personal meetings, not recorded, not town halls. So strategy, and once we have this selection get done, including Colombia candidates that we are lacking, we have one more, and Mexican friends to onboard and have a real representation of the whole region. We will move forward in putting the last lines and also sharing the roadmap drafting with them. If two members do this or three members, it's not logic. We want more knowledge. And as we reach this eight-member team, we're gonna have that. And then we will work on the governance and the token that we have already designed. So we think it's valid to go through the next phase with a solid team and share with them these responsibilities. Once we have that, we will be able to really scale in a stronger way. So yeah, for everyone that's still up in Europe, you guys wanna join and learn some Spanish? 22 UTC, we're gonna have our third town hall. And more to come. Next week, we're gonna start our weekly town halls and well, yeah, hope us luck on this challenge. And on regards of last, we have one concern on the next budget, which has increased the proportion of the one month that we missed in this operation. All concerns are valid. We will address them on Thursday's consent call. Thank you.
Thank you. Great stuff. This looked like a very solid approach to start off with the more experienced people and then build into scaling. Yeah, good stuff. Alright, then moving on to knowledge base workgroup, which usually gets combined by Tavvo with another couple of initiatives, so feel free to do so if you want, Tavvo.
Yeah, just continuing from also Latam. I imagined something like we had this speed parlaments where different countries are coming together and then if everybody has the same context of how the structure works and how governance works and how operation works, and they have it translated in their own language, they could speak in Spanish and so say in the call that they like give feedback, how to improve, what's the next proposal, where to go next in their own language, because they already know the context. So I guess it's nice to have like this new ground built in. But I will take all this knowledge base and treasury code and all that stuff in one call. Probably I will miss some, but starting from this page. Knowledge base, we are now finished like this organizing stuff, I should remember. Not that the live, we actually start the game in two weeks, so the next month probably we will see. Not next session, but we will come together and review our work. They are also easing process. Every week, there are some updates on the board. So that's nice to see. And it's also will be reflected on chain if it's not already. And then, yeah, just slowly going there. We are gonna touch on AI tooling. Probably if Ambassador Program does not yet have a ChatGPT account, then we might need one. And although I think there are updates that you don't need for that anymore. So we'll see which we go. But basically, we also gonna now take our knowledge and our structure so far, feed it to the GPD and let's see if they can spit some answers and then we save a lot of human time on organizing stuff, potentially. And Tivir PBL workgroup, we finally finished the live going through the course of how to manage Tivir. And we now get, new two new people are in the list. Oh, that reminds me. I did forgot in today's Treasury Operation Call to say everybody that from next quarter on, everybody who is operator and wants to facilitate has to have completed the Tivir PBL course, because now it's a third iteration. Well, actually it's 2.5, but third will come in Dicoto. And we're like you can see like third iteration of how the Tivir course is kind of structured, what to click, how to manage, what features there are. And yeah, for example, African Guild, I see your on-chain, I see your proposal, you're doing a great job. However, I do notice you're not using templates and this guide will help you to learn how to set them up and definitely they will speed up your progress compared to the duplication copy based thing you're doing right now, which has caused some errors in operation calls. And Treasury Call, I do remember last one where I shared a lot of documents, because you had, guys, you have agreed to do too much stuff, which means there is a need of a lot of guidance and material. And so we have the reporting guidelines and the policy workgroup is like how to be start managing treasury rules. And submission forum is getting out there on top of my head, whatever. So Treasury Call proposal itself, of course, is out now and the report of that and what we have done so far. So I will drop it later to chat if you want to see. Yeah, this will continue as usual. What else? We have the new Treasury Call proposal actually already got also full consent, so which means you will also start seeing at some point, probably in two weeks or in three weeks, a session about automation. So there will be a public call where we come together, share now our thoughts and deliverables, like in more, in plan, more detailed compared to what was proposed, going more in depth and assigning first action items. So you can now also see like another development and the team starting to take initiative and but focusing on treasury and management. Yeah, I guess that would be, if I didn't miss anything, then I'm done.
I think you have most. Yeah, nice. Thanks a lot.
Oh, and core contributors are updated. We have now an Excel sheet of past and previous history.
Yes, and just to make sure, I think it's 51 right now, correct? Just pretty amazing. I think it's
53, I think, even.
Even better? Amazing? Alright, yeah, thanks a lot. Then moving on to archival workgroup. And Beth, is yours?
I'm here. Yeah, so Archives Workgroup for the last month. I mean, obviously, like everybody else, we produced our quarter three budget and our quarter two report recently, which I'll just pop in the chat for anyone who's interested. And it was ace that the quarter three budget was consented to by the community. So that gives us a lot of confidence that people can see the value of what we've been doing and what we're planning. So what's been happening lately? One thing is that a team has been working on documenting the backlog of material from before the Archives Workgroup even existed. So we're looking at like early 2022 and stuff like that. It's mostly town halls. And it's really interesting. It gives an insight into kind of like our creation as a community and how we, where we come from. And we were kind of really different back then and yet kind of the same. So once the stuff is up and ready, I really recommend having a look. It's really interesting. Then another crew from the Archives team has been working on going through the corpus from before the meeting summary tool existed and tagging it and finding documents that might have been mentioned in meeting summaries but not linked. So it's kind of like detective work. And this will connect with the rag retrieval process that we're developing. It's the tags and the docs that will help an LLM to find the answers to questions that people might ask at the Archives. So yeah, for current workgroup documentation, that's also relevant, that it's really important to link any documents that you reference and to kind of tag things extensively or effectively or whatever you wanna call it. And we also had a couple of sessions this week actually to run people through how the meeting summary tool works, because there's always new people coming in who haven't used it before. So those were great. But if there's anyone out there who would still like to have a session, we still can. So just let us know in our Discord channel. The sessions that we had this week were pretty much beginner ones. But I've been thinking we could put together a more kind of advanced tips and tricks one if people were interested. And we could even look at folding this in with our quarter three plan for a complete overhaul of the tool. We're gonna be coming and asking documenters in, you know, all across the community for their input on that pretty soon. So I hope people will be able to give us their thoughts. And yeah, that's about it from us. That's the highlights. And our next meeting is tomorrow at 12 o'clock UTC and the link is on the calendar. So it'd be brilliant to see people there.
Awesome. Thanks a lot. And just to make sure, right now, there's no sessions planned for, additional sessions planned for the tooling demo, right?
No, no, we're looking for people. If people want one, tell us and we'll put something together. So yeah, a post in our Discord is the way to go.
Perfect. Okay, just making sure there's not stuff planned which is not on the calendar.
No, I think we've got everybody. I don't know, maybe there's people out there who still want one.
Alright, thanks a lot. Then moving on to education. And I need to think for a second where I can give the honors of representing. Became a long list of call attendants, so please unmute and speak up.
I can.
That's lit. Yeah, perfect.
Alright. Okay, hello, everybody. So from Education Guild side, we actually decided and discussed the platforms for Ambassador Certification Program, which is going to be converted to the Core Contributor Certification Program. And there were some suggestions from our guild members, which included the Teams application, the Google Classroom in Damiyo and some others as well, including Mentimeter. We had presentations on each of these platforms given by the guild members and highlighting their pros and cons of each of the platforms. And so we can better understand like which platform would suit the best for hosting our certification program. So at the end, we decided up with the Google Classroom and it suited best because it was with the tooling and with the extensions. It worked the best for us. And we also actually tested up classrooms inside of Google Classroom. So like some initial test before actually launching each of the resources over there. So we actually set it up classrooms and it went through two iterations. And we had people attending quizzes and also accessing the, our, like the resources that we created, but they were dummy entries at that moment, because we were just testing it. And after that, there was one problem with Google Classroom. And that was the, because we have to use the Google Forms inside of Google Classroom if we have to set up the quizzes. So we actually ideated on which plugins would suit best for Google Forms and to actually make the quiz fair and so that nobody can cheat, actually. And so in that, we actually ended up deciding the extended forms plugin, which will make the quizzes fair and for everybody. And so it has the AI checker inside of it. So if you changed slides and if you change screens or if you are changing tabs, it gets deleted. So that got decided as well and that was our tooling part. And then we also started in this quarter, we started the creation for the quizzes, which are being created regularly and are also signed to the guild members. And then we, of course, we, before setting up the quizzes, we had the review team set it up for the quizzes. So there is also a team who is reviewing the quizzes. And then we had the initiative by Waka and that's Learn with AI, which also got funded inside of Defunding. So kudos to him. So that's also thing. And then we started reworking some of the Education Guild blueprints and also started creating the ACP blueprint for everybody to better understand like what's the ACP and the Education Guild as a whole. Because the one that were available were outdated. So yeah, that's also going on. So that's all from Education Guild side. Thank you.
You? Looking forward to see that unfold. Let's see, then that brings us to RND. And I think that means back to Guillermo?
Yeah, so yeah, I was looking for some partners here, so I guess the update is today's governance meeting and quarter report and the status situation. So we presented internally for the last couple of months, the concern, well presented on Q2 budget approval, on regards of deliverables. On regards of operations, we have been just been getting better and better. We migrate all operations to GitHub. We created the repos as we have planned on the roadmap. Kisi have been doing an amazing job. We are still lacking on onboarding. But we got good on getting new proposals. And that's a problem, because we need to still deliver on the proposals that we have on the pipeline. And that's our commitment with the community. On the quarterly report, we presented not only a response to the concerns from the community, but also the new rules, rules, yeah, guidelines, let's say, or for the guild. That is, teams that don't present deliverables in this quarter for the proposals on the pipeline will not have disbursement of resources. They will have to deliver first as the resources have been allocated last previous quarter. We discussed this again internally with some members of the community and then within the guild on last weekly meeting past Wednesday. So all the team members in charge of development present updates. But we have to give them the right to present deliverables before the end of this month. That was the agreement. So they still have one week. And then we will follow what we have committed. And the budget have allocation for some meta test ride on the new platform, contingency budget that I believe now probably should be allocated into operations, because it's the only functioning part of a guild as today. And we're gonna have more responsibilities. And as I mentioned before, we have new rules, everybody. We have deliverables and not in a repos, no disbursement. And that will give space for new proposals. Now we have the waiting line, new proposal presented by Kenichi for a strong layout framework for community engagement. And so and stuff today that I checked before the meeting, we have some data on three of the six repos. So again, let's give the teams the chance to prove their good to deliver. And I'll tell you more after tomorrow's meeting and we'll see what we have done. It's a strong team and also everybody have been busy with the funding round four. We have four core team members that have been awarded. And that's something, you know, it's a big shout out for them. But still, this is the committee, our commitment here is with the ambassadors and the core contributors. And again, there are more proposals waiting on the timeline. So we will just play Tetris, I guess, and give more space for new, for new developers and yeah, the commitment. So I think that's it. If I'm missing something, I just let you know on the next.
Thank you. And yeah, of course, almost by definition, if there's one workgroup that's gonna have impacts from deep funding overlapping timelines, it's gonna be RND Guild, right? Alright, that covers the first page. Onto the second, because there's a second. Quickly at the clock, 20 minutes remaining and nine updates remaining. That means less than three minutes. Let's try and see where we go. But please don't, yeah, just keep time in mind a little bit.
I can do it in less than three.
Okay. Yeah, starting at the top of the list with onboarding. I see multiple people that could represent, so please unmute and step up. I see Love. The floor is yours.
Hi, everyone. I'm Love from Buddy Work Group. So I'm going to be quick. This month, we've managed to put in our quarterly reports and the Q3 budget request, which has been approved, by the way. We're actually happy about it, because that means we can get started what we have for quarter three. And then we have the onboarding session and survey analysis. I'm going to try and drop the link here now. So everyone can go to it. It's a draft, so please Please ignore any mess you see in it. Link is in the chat, guys. So just go through it. And make comments. Thank you. Uh then the next thing that we did this month was the uh onboarding workgroup skill matrix. Uh drafted and written correctly by our dear S Van. I'm going to drop that too in the link. The summary of the skill uh metrics is basically about um skills that our workgroup members. Have and would like to learn. And then there's another part in the um uh document that shows. Where people have written down the uh four foundational skills that they believe that the onboarding workgroup needs right now. So I'm going to drop the link to the skill metrics. In the chat too, for everyone to go through it. Um. Where is it? Please. Pardon me, yeah. Got it. Try to be fast. So the link to the skill uh body workgroup skill metrics is in the chat, guys. And then the third and the last thing that I have to say is uh our body system reports. There's a link to that too, so our body system was kind of um. A system where experienced and um. I wouldn't say experts, but something similar. Members being paired with uh newbies or uh novice members. To collaborate on tags and uh get on boarded to the workgroup successfully. Or any other workgroup of their choice, that was what we did this this quarter, so we've been able to draft a report on that too. I'm going to drop the link now for everyone to go through it. And um. Yeah. One of our plans for quarter three that we got from this body system is that we're going to have a set of onborders. Who are going to be giving um one-to-one skill targeted and um. Uh. Engaging a more personal. Onboarding uh way of a way of bringing in new people into the ambassador program. I'm going to drop the. Link to the budget, so everyone can go through what we wrote there. And um. I think that's all from the Bodywork Group, there's link in the chat, guys, please just go through it. And feel free to make comments, thank you so much.
Well done, thanks a lot. And quite a bunch of uh documents to deep dive into. Nice. And moving on without further ado to the African guilds. Hmm, Duke Peter, are you in the room? It's a long list, but I don't think I see another representative perhaps of the African guilds who can give an update. Ah, okay, of course, sure, the floor is yours.
I'll be giving all this one uh quarterly review on the. African Guild, so um basically so far we've been able to do some familiarization and identification. Um within a short time and. Yes, and Africa has been able to assemble all Africans from various parts of U2. Uh coming together to make this a big project, so. Also, all structures are delayed and yet to be completed, so we actually still getting more ideas and wonderful contributions. On how we can improve. So we actually have laid out plans to reach out to various African African countries to bring up this community, kickstarting. And. For the. For the Q two, I'll be dropping a link to the chat. More events for um this month before the end of the Q two and we are looking at having. Um an Emma session on the ADI in Africa, navigating trends and impacts. On the twenty eighth of June, uh it's also inside the link and the future discussions and suggestions. The travel question as well, so. Uh not necessarily just only African, but we're also all welcome to join. Uh you can also go go to the link for our plans for. Q three, and we also have laid out plans working for the Q three, and it's also in the link there. Do also joining our meetings and talks these.
Alright, thanks a lot, the latter part was back to uh possible to understand again. Nice. You, um looking at the clock, we cannot take five ti- uh five minutes per uh upcoming uh work group. Otherwise we'll run over by at least half an hour, uh so yeah, a quick reminder to uh. Try and keep it somewhat short. Um, moving on to marketing guilds, um do we have a representative? If so, feel free to unmute and step up.
Nobody's there, I can quickly, uh Marketing Guild is in development. So there are quite some people very engaged in figuring out to define new leads and scope and the proposal and everything. So there have been quite some, yeah, conflict around the quarter three proposal in the last weeks, which are gradually resolved step by step, which is really nice. And yeah, Marketing Guild, after quite some stormy time, is looking on to more safe waters, setting up structure and everything. Proposal and co- contributors. And next direct action for them is a session on, I think, on Friday. So also you can see on the calendar, the Marketing Guild sessions are back on the calendar on a weekly basis, that's correct. And, yeah. And next step directly here this week is uh defining co- contributors for the Marketing Guild fleet, which will then. Properly facilitate and execute their proposal. Which is currently on consent process, I would say, like all other guilds and workshops as well.
I think that's pretty accurate. Thank you, stepping up there. Um, then moving on to writers' work group. Kenichi? The floor is yours.
Um, yeah, hello there, uh hello everyone. So, um. The, here is the link to. Uh quarterly reports. Chat. Alright, and um. Apart from this, we also, um I think the most recent updates from this month, um yet to be. Calculated totally though, we actually um officially started posting on the Spanish page, uh Spanish ambassador. Uh program page and also we have uh. We currently have uh someone in charge of the French page, so that leaves out the pigeon page. Uh yeah, so these two pages uh in. I'm joining with the main page who also be posting content and we have like a whole calendar and uh. The setup uh across the current people that are managing the pages, so and also we. Uh I have like three articles right now on our community uh page, so uh for anyone who might not know. The community page is basically a a separate publication from the uh ecosystem that we've been building for over a year now. And the community page basically facilitates uh each person or each scribbler or interested party. We have also updated our uh member list uh roles, which will take effect from next quarter. Uh so now we have a new role that allows people, the pupil role that allows people to write articles that they are passionate about. Uh the engage the community and get posted on their direct medium accounts through the publication. So once you have this pupil target, it can also be added as a writer, you submit your draft and uh describe to edit. And publish, but the writer's name stays there, so you.
Remind you the time also.
Oh yeah, sorry. Yeah, so uh apart from the community page and the uh platforms also are, we still doing points on our trivia, so stay tuned for that. And the Zili is also going. And the sprint ends next month, so beginning of next month, yeah.
Nice, thank you. Uh yeah, the clock says seven minutes remaining, almost seven workgroups remaining, five more, uh we're at the video workgroup. And. I'm not sure if I should ask Malik. Oh, yours, yeah.
Alright, good guys. So. Um from the video group, this month, we had total of twelve long videos and seven short clips. Um also, we had um a collaboration with the writers' workgroup on the Zili platform. So we reached a decision whereby a a an act member. From both workgroups, we act as a liaison to help um streamline the. Uh engagement process for the videos of the video workgroups. So, um we also. Had the new member this uh quarter, this month, in the person of Andrew Ben. And um we submitted a. Two three budgets, although it wasn't approved, but we'll have further discussions in our next meeting. So you are welcome, our meetings are on the. On Fridays, sixteen UTC, so I think that's off on the video.
Nice, ankle size, uh thanks a lot. Moving on to gamers guilds. I see there's a slit in the room, is the?
Yeah.
All yours.
I'm back. Alright, so um. From gamers guild side, um the squatter, uh we actually uh had our main focus uh on towards increasing the awareness. And the uh participation inside of the uh Roblox platform. And uh it mainly had a focus towards the Roblox Studio, which is our development site for the Roblox platform. And at the start of the quarter, uh we only had like two users of the Roblox Studio, mainly our developers and uh which is now increased to. Eight participants uh who are actively participating in the development processes. And. Um, we also, as proposed in the uh start of our quarter, uh we actually uh carried out the information collection task. From different workgroups and guilds uh for the way they want their uh workgroup to be uh designed inside of the uh. Virtual reality that we are creating. And then we had, uh I guess, one, two, three, four, four workshops, uh namely, uh. For animations and dialogue system teachings, asset creation for the Roblox marketplace. Then for uh NPCs, uh the non-playable characters creations and uh. Yeah, so uh these four workshops were given and uh they were successfully given and uh. Now contributors from the gamers guild are participating in uh creating assets and also the dialogue system. And the animation systems uh for each of the departments. And then we had uh two departments created this quarter, uh we finalized the onboarding workgroup and then we finalized the video workgroup. Um. Then also uh guidance and uh the mentorship uh was continuously provided to the new members joining in because we had. Relatively high engagement uh in this quarter uh in the gamers guild session and uh. So guidance was provided uh regarding the Roblox platform and also the Roblox Studio to new members joining in. Uh now going towards the technical additions in this quarter, uh we added uh and that's mainly related to the uh game uh that we are creating. And we added game passes, uh we added Aegis as a in-game currency, which is going to be converted to the ASI. So people will be able to use ASI to buy stuff inside of the game and also collect it inside of in-game as well. Uh we also added shops and also various other activities, uh which include a lot of stuff. Actually, uh which is also going to be a source of monetization inside of the Roblox platform. And um through asset creation, we are going to be publishing our assets created by the gamers guild member to the Roblox marketplace. And um we also made a addition uh of a AI-based model uh in this quarter and uh this was going, this was actually. Uh um added to the VR for the purpose of making it more lively. So there's going to be AI civilists uh which are going to be roaming around and uh acting to certain. Um piece of stimulus and um. For example, being scared, uh running and also going to work and stuff like that. So ABA Civilist was added to the VR, um also. Yeah, sorry.
At time, by good zero minute.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll just wrap it up, yeah. Alright, so uh and we also added the uh start game GUI, um it's like a start screen when you enter the game. Uh and we also made the uh VR game playable on all devices, so if you're joining in from a different device, you can play it uh without with ease. And yeah, that's about it. Uh thank you for the time.
Nice, lots of stuff happening there. Um, moving on to strategy guilds, any representative in the house? Feel free to unmute and step up. It looks like both Billy and Soundwaves are not here, um. Yeah, basically, well, I can give a a short update at least, uh during yesterday's call, I had to leave midway, so I didn't get the. Portion where the future looking uh took place, so that would need a a separate uh update. Um but basically Billy decided to step back on leadership and shift that over, hand that over to Soundwaves. Uh to pick it up and. Yeah, we had a bit of reflection on that and then. As mentioned before, we're looking as a part of that session, I missed, but uh I assume meeting summary will pop on Discord shortly. Haven't seen it yet, but um yeah. We're now unless anybody has any contributions, um that's it. Um, then moving on to governance workgroup. Felix?
Oh, governance, it's me. I can actually make this insanely easy, because I have a screenshot, I have a screenshot of our whole activity of the whole month, because we. We created it on as a task, actually. Uh why is this thing not loading up? Yeah, for sure, it's never loading up if you wanted to load it. Uh, well, it's not loading here. Well, uh screenshot in a second, quick intro, uh mostly focusing on yeah facilitating all the decision-making. Progressive uh processes in the ambassador's program, mainly. The Q one, Q two budget allocations, which have been improved a little earlier, then also ideating and. Improving the current decision-making courses for quarter three. Additional to this, a bunch of retrospectives, which have been outlined on the monthly agenda through the whole month of. June. It started with a retrospective on budgetary issues, then. Look forward and retrospective on decision-making model, ideally concluded in the ideation and changes to governance processes. And finalized on. Uh current decision uh process and status on quarter three budgets. Additional to this, we host as well uh additional weekly open governance workgroup sessions where we address. Aside the fixed agenda, timely issues on governance topics which come up in the ecosystem. Right now, for example, spending some time to help Marketing Guild to move forward. And furthermore, Discord channel is maintained. The work tasks are improved, we allocate more tasks, our more across more contributors and using more of our unspent budgets. So far, because we usually went below thirty percent of the whole budget and moving on to this as well, and that's it. See you next month, stay awesome, everybody.
Where's the picture?
Wait, where's the picture, wait? Because I didn't want it to not wait, tick, 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 here it goes. I take this one and I put it in the live chat. Oh, there it goes, it's also on the D work task, by the way, I can send you the link to the D work task also, if you would like. Okay, that's from governance, next one, who's next one, AI ethics stuff?
Yes, yeah, stop screen sharing to allow you to screen share the screenshot, um but it's in chat now, so that that does work.
Oh, screen share screenshot and take a screenshot of this, that's good, let's do this actually, we just waste some time, we're over time already.
Um, yeah, maybe after we uh go to AI ethics uh workgroup, uh let's see who's here to. Represent and.
And that's probably gonna be me, I don't think Lulu's here. Okay. Okay, so yeah, I feel like I ought to explain for those who don't know, because this is a newish workgroup. It was created this quarter to connect up with the work that's being done by the Global AI Ethics Initiative, which is part of the foundation. And led by Esther, Haley and Lulu, who some of you might know. And it aims to collect research data from the general public about their concern. And it aims to collect research data from the general public about their concerns and priorities about the ethical use of AI. So that's kind of what we're trying to support in the workgroup. So we had our quarter two budget approved and then there was a lot of uncertainty over who was actually going to kick things off and that caused a few delays. So I stepped up, started the ball rolling, but it was quite late in the day. So that means that the core activity we plan to do in quarter two, we will still be doing for a bit. And that is drafting some strategies to inform the Global AI Ethics Initiative's research. So it's stuff like, how should we research? How should we do it ethically? And how should we manage the information we get? So we're working on that now with fifteen interested people in the teams, which is really exciting. Um. We're trying to work as much as possible without needing people to be in meetings every week. We want to try and focus on being async and working in small groups. And we also will make mentorship a bit of a focus, where less experienced members will shadow those with more experience. So yeah, today we heard that the community has read our quarter two report and consented to our quarter three budget, which is brilliant. And two of the things we plan to do, which are quite exciting in quarter three, is first of all, there's going to be an event in Nigeria. A sort of symposium about AI ethics topics in collaboration with Africa Guild. So that's something that's really exciting. And the other thing is that we have some funding to catalyze conversations in the ambassador community around AI ethics topics. So we will be running an event or two and we've also got money put aside for. Like individual efforts, like pairs or small groups, like you and a couple of your mates. To sit down together and have a conversation on some topic around AI ethics, capture a few notes to share. And get like twenty dollars each for giving your thinking and giving your ideas. Because we think it's kind of important to recognize and reward people for their intellectual property, for their thinking, for their input into conversations around AI. And also loads of people find it dead intimidating to speak up in a big meeting with people they don't know. So yeah, we could even fund individuals to create some kind of little talking point. I don't know, a set of slides, a loom video, something like that. On some aspects of AI ethics. So yeah, watch out for news about that soon. We haven't got a definite meeting date set for the actual workgroup, but the one that's listed is for the AI Ethics Initiative. So please come to that, which is Tuesday next week.
Awesome, great one there. Uh especially if that you, if you really just shake that out of your sleeve. Nice. Um. Alright, uh that does conclude the workgroup updates. I did see a short uh shout-out request uh by Easy. If you can do it within a minute, uh the floor is yours. Um after that, we'll wrap up.
Alright, thank you so much, Peter. Hi, everyone. Just a quick one. So we are having our first AMA session. So the idea is to educate the African community. On AI and its impact and also trends. So want to explore how we can use AI in Africa for good. And also inspire meaningful and impactful and impactful um contributions. So it's happening this Friday by four PM. Um you can look um. Can leave the form, so everyone that fills the form will be sending you DG in the meeting link by the end of tomorrow or next. And we'll also be dropping the meeting link in. In all the groups, right? Yeah, I think I'm well within time. Thank you so much, Peter, for giving us the opportunity. Alright.
No worries, you're most welcome. I think it's a great initiative. And um but please, um if you if you want it included on the community calendar, uh do shoot me a DM with all details. So I should base on there. Um yeah, just for additional visibility, right?
Alright, I will do that. Thank you. Send it tomorrow. It's pretty late here. Alright.
No worries, no worries. Alright, um yeah, looking at the clock, we don't have additional time for open topics uh today. But um seeing we also started about um eight minutes overtime, I think we managed to squeeze it into a one-hour session. Uh this does um lead me to believe we should start tunnels on time, because. Yeah, you know, it's just a bit annoying to not run over super long, but still eight minutes. Um. It cuts into other slots. Uh yeah, I think um.
Or at least for the monthly stand-up calls, simply increase to one and a half hour, because it's always the issue and problems. We don't get let let uh get less groups, we get more groups, so may maybe just extending it so nobody can do this uh.
Yeah, fair. Uh tougher.
Another option is we are getting used to creating templates. Maybe we want to have a bit of a template of a structure. Or what is actual time slot for these people? What are the guiding questions? So after this meeting ends, the video workgroup and our writers' workgroup don't have to come up with summaries and take the videos, create it into the result. But before the downhole happens, every workgroup has to, like they already, I see different workgroups already doing that, where they sign a person. Hey, can you help with this downhole stuff? Maybe not doing it on the documents or wherever they prepare the stuff, they just write into an Excel, which is already prepared. Or slides are open, they have their own specific spot where they write in what we're doing. And yeah, we just need to decide is the impact we want to see, is this onboarding we want to see? And like take, pick up elements and fit it into the dial, so that we have this thirty minutes where we just. Shit ton of content at one pace and then we also have an asset that is visually, you can see how you're so doing different things. And then we have this thirty or other stuff, which is coming out of that high-frequency information chain.
I consider it working. Um we'd be happy to get more opinions. Uh maybe theoretically, we could touch on it uh during the workgroup sync call. Um. Alternatively, well, this is something I would like more input on, right? Uh from from more people. I do like what you're saying and would be happy to just adopt, basically. Um. It does sound like it would be good to have more input on. Um. And yeah, to ensure this call doesn't take another twenty minutes diving into the topic, I I think we we should um. First of all, shift that to Discord and potentially touch on and and workgroup sync and call. Does that make any sense? Yeah, I see in chat as well, uh a bit confused on what you're saying. So yeah, that.
Process queue channel, this is where we can continue. If somebody wants to implement a structure for this specific tunnel, this monthly ones, where we have like a very planned out slots. What people say, like the guiding questions, what they produce, how much time they have. So even though this structure is also nice, like everybody's just feeling an emotion into it, how this thing is putting up. But perhaps that is. For a retrospective or a different call, and we could try like a professional quick presentation, like an idea fist. Something, but the monthly one, a gift of your plans for your workgroup.
Well, I think it's it's great feedback and and to be explored, I reckon. Alright, um I think that's a wrap for today. So I'd like to thank, well, every single one of you. Still twenty pi- uh twenty people here. Thanks a lot for for sharing your time this this evening. And I'm sure most of you are well aware, there's a ton more community calls coming up. I think tomorrow we have four, Thursday we have a lot, um six. Friday has three. No need to be bored ever. Um so yeah, I did see on any of those calls or um. Otherwise on Discord. Thanks all for being awesome and being here. See you around.
Thanks for hosting, Peter.